Go ahead. Welcome to the December 16th meeting, the Zoom meeting of the Doylestown Planning Commission. And we'll start off with our review of the meeting minutes from November. Does anybody have any questions, corrections? Anything that has to be changed on those meeting minutes? Comments? Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second, but I think we had to review the meetings from the previous meeting as well. There was a correction, we didn't approve them.
Yeah, the October meeting was approved and nobody gave me the corrections to make. And I had, I know Mr. Kelso had indicated there were some corrections and nobody
You haven't gotten them?
And he has not sent them to me. So unless
Still on hold?
You can either keep them on hold or if the others have reviewed it and feel comfortable with it. You know, I know you reviewed them at the last meeting. You know, we can go ahead and approve them.
I'll move to approve those as well.
Okay, can we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
So then October and November minutes are approved. Thank you.
All right, if anyone from the public has any comments or questions or anything that they want to get off their chest, now's your chance. We just ask you to state your name and address for the, for the record. So is there anybody that has anything to discuss other than the sketch plan that we're going to be looking at? Hearing nothing? Okay, we can move on to 280 North Broad Street. And we have a presentation.
Yes, I believe Jason Duckworth is on the Zoom call and will make the presentation. Jason, I think you're going to be sharing your screen. It is set for multiple people, so feel free to start.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Planning Commission and members of the public. I'm Jason Duckworth. I'm the president of Arcadia Land Company. And though we are on the agenda tonight for a sketch plan, I'd like to emphasize at the outset that I tonight am at the earliest possible stage of developing concepts for this property. This property is an industrially zoned property located on Broad Street, which is a corridor of the borough and the township, which is rapidly changing, becoming increasingly residential and mixed use with significant public investments. The borough is in the process of reevaluating their zoning to support that changing pattern of land use. This property, as it turns out, is located in two municipalities. It's the strangest of properties, which in fact straddles the municipal boundary. So I've had some dialogue with Doylestown Borough in the past. I recently had the opportunity to speak to members of your township staff. So this is the first time I'm having a chance to introduce myself to you and talk to you about this property. I do have a short presentation to make, which invariably I have plans and renderings and things to react to. But I do want to emphasize that I hope that I'm here more tonight. I hope you know that I'm here more tonight really to listen and get your feedback than I am to put forth too many specifics. My company firmly believes that our projects improve with the input of the public. So with that, Stephanie, I think I will share my screen, just bear with me one moment. Terrific, and I hope everyone can see the green background. Thank you very much. So I'll just briefly introduce my company to give you a sense of our company's focus. Our company has a specialty in walkable communities. Twenty years ago, our company was building Greenfield Traditional Neighborhoods. We built Woodmont, which is indicated there in the upper right photograph, which is in Huntington Valley, Lower Moreland Township. In the last 10 years, our focus has really turned more to redevelopment opportunities. We've worked in Narberth Borough in Montgomery County. We've done two projects in Media Borough in Delaware County. And that's indicated by the photograph there in the middle. But wherever we work, our, our hope is to create opportunities for pedestrians and cyclists and not just serve the motorist. Our hope is to create public spaces that, that all community members can enjoy and not just create private spaces. And we, we very much want to be responsive to the, to the context of our sites and the desires of the communities that we work in. 280 North Broad Street is located on the south side of, of North Broad Street, located across the street from the proposed redevelopment of the Intelligencer. The red dot that you see there indicates its location. And I'm going to attempt to bring up my laser pointer. So you can see its location there, very close to the, the new Gateway Park that the borough is completing as we speak, as well as the county parking garage. The property, many people recognize as the former home of Tilly fire extinguishers. This property is a mid-century, single-story industrial building. You can see some of the interior photographs here, relatively high ceilings, steel roof trusses, a gravel parking area, a lay-down area in the back for deliveries and operations. There is a wooded portion of the property in the back. And it, the property adjoins to the north, the former ChemFab property. And it joins on, forgive me, to the west, it's the ChemFab property. And to its east is the Fred Beans Auto Distribution Facility. And those patterns on this side of Broad Street are the historic pattern of more industrial use. So with this slide, I'm trying to indicate to you the, the, the nature of the municipal boundary. And as you can see, in this portion of the township, there is this sort of slender finger of land, which is predominantly industrial. And this particular parcel that I'm here to speak to you all tonight about is in fact the furthest extremity in this, in this parcel, in this stretch of land that runs down parallel to Broad Street. One thing that is interesting though about this site, and if you see in the upper right here, where I've indicated the walk score of the property, is that it has a relatively high walk score of 75. So for those of you who may not be familiar with WalkScore, WalkScore is a website and it is an algorithm which attempts to measure the walkability of different locations. So you can put in your own home address and find out how this algorithm considers your location to be based upon the availability of sidewalks, proximity to shopping, schools and other services. And as it turns out, this location in fact has a walk score of 75 out of 100, which is, is relatively high for industrial locations. To give you a sense, locations even in Center City Philadelphia, perhaps not right of Rittenhouse Square, of course, but areas like residentially in, in Center City Philadelphia will regularly have walk scores in the eighties. And that's, and so you can see that this site, though industrial in character, has the potential to really be part of the walkable environment of what we know and, and love as historic Doylestown. The distance from our site, say to Starbucks there at State and Main is about a 10-minute walk. Here's a closer view showing the two tax parcels. This parcel here is located in Borough. It's approximately three quarters of an acre. And then this parcel here in the back is in the township and it is approximately three acres. This view also shows you that one of the adjoining uses is self-storage located here also in your township. And then this is the Fred Beans property that I had mentioned earlier, located in the Borough. So this is your zoning map and we've attempted to highlight the zoning of this area of the township. As you can see here in the call-out section, it's in your LI district. And as indicated here in the highlighted blue, it is the furthest extremity of this little appendage of land. So in some ways, interestingly, the property is more bound up with the land use patterns of the borough than in other parts of your township. Another view of the same point, I will just mention that here on the right side, this shows the, the zoning of the borough. And the borough has, has similarly zoned this property for industrial use. So I want to take you back in time to the 1990s. And over the last few months, I've had a chance to read the comprehensive plan of the borough, to look at the comprehensive plan of the township, to learn a little bit about the history of this corridor. And one of the things I learned is that back in 1992, there was in fact a joint plan prepared between the township and the borough for this Broad Street corridor. In 1997, a comprehensive plan was prepared for the borough and looked at the Broad Street corridor in its totality. And I want to highlight to you one comment here in the paragraph that I've excerpted, saying that what they concluded is that, quote, "A harmonious mix, including new residential, commercial and office uses with open space could create an ideal balance within the corridor." So not too long after, say in year 2000, this was the state of affairs for Broad Street. So what I've attempted to indicate here in the color coding is to show industrial or blighted properties. So back in 2000, the CarTechs property was located here along Veterans Lane. There is the Intel property, PennDOT, Mrs. Paul's situated near North Main Street. The Fred Beans, of course, is still there, self-storage was at that point. The Tilly property was, it was in its current condition. And there were other industrial type uses in, in this corridor. High-density residential existed here in the borough where Wesley Enhanced Living is located with approximately 225 apartments and Center Square with about 350 apartments. Office was located here in this, in, in these areas, including, I think, the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. So this was the condition, an eclectic pattern of uses, but with clearly the legacy of industrial use, particularly as indicated in brown. So one of the things that was interesting is in all of those comprehensive plan workshops, apparently this corridor of Doylestown Borough was considered the citizens' least favorite part of the borough. So let's roll the clock ahead to this year, 2020. And in many ways, the, the Borough and the Township and Borough Joint Plan has been substantially realized. So for example, CarTechs has become the Lantern Hill Development. Mrs. Paul's became the Belvedere Townhouse Community. This property here, which I think was an old dairy site, became of course the, the county garage. Substantial streetscape improvements were made to Broad Street, including the enhanced intersection paving that you see here in the lower left. And this year, of course, work has begun on the new Borough Park, on the PennDOT Yard. And of course, the borough is renovating the beautiful Art Deco PennDOT building into a future municipal building. You may also have heard that there have been plans in the works for some time for the Intelligencer to be redeveloped into a planned mixed-use community. I believe at approximately 225, maybe a little bit more of density and additional commercial uses. So it's pretty remarkable, the entire north side of Broad Street has largely gone in the direction of fulfilling this vision from 20 years ago. And so tonight I want to talk to you about a piece of the puzzle on the south side of Broad Street, the Tilly property. So one of the things that at Arcadia we like to do when developing some ideas for a project is to go back in history a little bit. And we, there's a remarkable repository of online historic maps at the Library of Congress website. So if you look here, the, the map on the left shows that Broad Street was in fact once called Dutch Lane. I think it became Broad Street sometime in the early 20th century, but back then it was, it was Dutch Lane. You can actually see Broad Street was its name to the east side of, of North Main. But the Tilly property, which is approximately in this area, was part of Henry Long's old brickyard. And a sandboard map as shown here on the right, the orientation is totally different. Sorry for making this so confusing, but the orientation, as you see, this is the Tilly property in this plan's orientation. And it too indicates that it was part of, of a brickyard nearly 100 years ago. So we were thinking about Brick and Doylestown and the industrial heritage of this section of, of the community. And we couldn't help but think of the Doylestown Ag Works, which is of course a magnificent building, built in the 19th century, burned down, later rebuilt. But it was a manufacturing location for agricultural tools, particularly threshers as I understand it. And for a time was even a place where automobiles were manufactured. And this building obviously is today been transformed into office and retail space. And so we took that as inspiration, some of the historical ideas, and we came up with this. The notion was here to create a brick building with a gracious frontage or North Broad, a frontage that would not be dominating in its scale. We were really taken with the gabled roof, which of course was taken right from the script of, of Ag Works. But our desire here is to create ground floor retail and commercial space to have apartments upstairs. So in this building, as indicated by my, my pointer, this would be the first for commercial space. You may note that I have double-height commercial space here to provide for high ceilings, most appropriate, say for a food use, and then showing three stories of apartments above. We are showing in the back though, in this section, I should probably point out, this is located in the borough. And the municipal boundary runs between the two buildings. And in this section of the property, we are locating the preponderance of the development, which would be located, it's, it's rental market rate apartments that are built to wrap around a structured parking garage. But again, we've carried the architectural concept shown here on North Broad Street, carried them back to the main building and tried to create a pattern of brick gables. Here's that view again, showing head-on, if one were to stand in the Intelligencer property, looking at our building, you would see this grand chimney, the gable, the double-height commercial space and kind of an echo of that same style taken to the facade of township building. This is a side view of the property. And this shows you how we join the two projects so that ultimately they're integrated as a single project. But we felt that for various reasons, it would make sense to have a clean break between the improvements in the township and the improvements in the borough. And this, I think there's multiple advantages from an approval standpoint, tax assessors standpoint. And, but ultimately, there would be unified ownership and unified operations. Another view of the same. So as you can see, overall, the building is five stories. This view gives you a sense in the township, our structured parking garage located in the middle. So there will be no garages visible from North Broad Street. Instead, it'll all be residential architecture visible to the public. And the apartments wrap this garage. And one of the great advantages of this style of construction is it provides for extremely convenient parking. A resident would tend to park at the level of the garage, which is where they live. And it also provides generally for single-loaded corridors for a high degree of privacy. So this is a planned view of this, of this initial version. So again, the small jewel box building, as we call it, located in the borough with ground floor commercial space and the remainder of the building located here in the township, preservation of woodlands and a stream corridor here to the rear. And the garage located in the middle. You can also see that we're planning on a courtyard with amenity space, including an outdoor swimming pool. So I have a second version to show you. So this version actually, as its starting point, seeks to adaptively reuse the existing Tilly building. So you may recognize the shape of this as being that of the existing Tilly building. But the notion here was to creatively reuse this building and to make it a commercial and amenity space. We would put a new roof on it. So we're actually talking about having a clear story across the, the ridge or the roof line. But we think we can get to about a 28-foot clear height in the middle of the space, which we think would just be, you know, really grand for a restaurant use, fitness uses. In this concept, we're playing with the notion of bringing in a microbrewery. And so that's what the tanks are that you see here. The entrance, the entry, as you can see here, we're enhancing with, with pavers, trying to have it not read as a parking lot, but really as, as a plaza. And there's a major emphasis, and I failed to mention it really in the earlier version, but a major emphasis on the streetscape to provide for the on-street parking, which has been called for in the pending ordinance in the borough, to provide for broad sidewalks, a pattern of street trees. And what we're hoping is for an element of outdoor dining that's available there right along the sidewalk. Another view of the same concept. The back here, we've not, at this point, put in all the windows, but we would certainly intend to improve that facade. But we are in this version showing for a one-way exit here and then providing for a two-way entrance at this point. Another view of the same. So in this version, obviously, there's no residential density shown in the borough. The borough project is intended to be a simpler adaptive reuse of the existing building with commercial and that the residential project would be located then entirely in the township. Again, our intent would there, for there to be unified ownership and unified operations. So this is, and all, and all, this is the plan of the second version. And there's a lot of details here that I don't think I need to bore you with now. But I think with that, I would just like to thank you for your time and to emphasize that this is very preliminary and I truly welcome all of your input. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm surprised that there's not a little more open space, but I like the concept very much, especially the second one. I think that's very attractive and we're all waiting for the brew pub. Something that we wanted on the, the, the other corridor that they were discussing, but hasn't happened yet. So I'm, I'm just wondering, it seems that there's not much of a view for those apartments and there's not much open space relative to the size of it. Is that, but that's just my initial, you know, gut feeling.
I, 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 I think, I think you are right. I mean, the, the project has relatively little open space onsite. We, we are going to, of course, have private courtyard space and outdoor pool. And, and we do provide, so one of the, one of the things I should, I should, I should mention is that the Harvey Street wastewater treatment plant is located not far to the west. So one of the things that we were hoping to do is to preserve the woodlands for a substantial width as a buffer to that. But, but really for us, with the way we view this property, and my guess is the way that many of the developers working now along this corridor, is that the amenity is the park that the borough has now constructed and historic Doylestown, that walking 10 minutes to have a variety of shopping and dining experiences is the best reason to live here. And so we would like to maintain as much open space as is, as feasible in this project. But our emphasis is, is principally on connecting these residents with the borough to support its businesses. One, one thing in terms of view, I'll just say, is that when one gets up a story or two, the view particularly to the west is, is quite lovely with the beginning of some rolling hills. And then of course, if the view back to the borough, once you get up to the second or third story, you of course have the courthouse and some of the church steeples. So we, we recognize that in a transitional neighborhood that for a temporary, an interim period of time, we're going to have an adjoining warehouse and adjoining self-storage. But I, my hope is that maybe when someone else does a presentation 20 years from now, they're going to be talking about the succession of transformations going on. And, you know, maybe the Fred Beans people will be talking to the borough about its redevelopment.
Well, I, I think it's a very nice concept and I, I like the idea of the mixed-use development there. I think it's, it's an attractive option and one that there seems to be a need for that kind of density in, in housing. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions?
Is there going to be balconies for those apartments or anything like that?
Yes, we, we intend on certain of the facades to have balconies. The architectural concept for the jewel box, as we call it there in the first version, did not provide for balconies there. And that was simply an aesthetic decision to try to give that industrial look. But we fully intend to provide private balconies in other parts of the building as that is an attractive amenity.
Anyone else?
I have, I have a few comments. Hi, Jason.
Hi Greg.
Greg Repa speaking.
Good evening.
Things have really changed over the years on that Broad Street corridor. And, you know, I've been personally involved in some of them. And it's kind of an odd bird entrance to the borough. And it's amazing how much traffic Broad Street gets nowadays with the, especially since the bypass intersection has been completed with the ramps, which was probably done probably 20 years ago now. I'm curious, what was, what is going on in the borough with the Intelligencer building at this point? And I don't know if maybe Jack O'Brien can comment on that. And with the Borough Hall, you have the new park going in. So there's been a lot of things that have happened on the Borough side. This is a very narrow strip of the township that juts into and is surrounded by the borough. And it's kind of an odd bird. And I'd be interested to find out what's going on on the Borough side and what their thoughts are on this rezoning.
Well, let me try and make a few comments here. Of course, this, this concept has not been presented to the borough at this point, as, as, as you may or may not be aware. I'm not sure. I think this is the first time it's been floated. I believe there have been several iterations of concepts for the Intel property at this point. And, and they have come, they're coming back a third time, I believe. I think it, it, it's later this week or later this month, I'm not sure. So we haven't seen final versions of that yet. And I, I share your, Greg, I share your concern about the traffic on Broad Street. I live off of Broad Street up uh off a shady retreat there. And it, there are times of day with it's virtually impossible to make a left turn. At that red light because of this continuous stream of traffic coming out of town. So that that is a concern. And if you look closely at these plans that were shown, there's a number of uh. I I I don't want to call them intersections, but where Atkinson Drive comes out. There was conversation about putting a traffic light in there because of the needs of of the intel property. With one of their exits coming out onto Atkinson. However, there are other exits coming out like the one you propose here. I'm not sure. At this point, it's probably too early to have said anything about a traffic study. But I think this is just going to exacerbate the problem on Broad Street. And and quite frankly, Broad Street's not quite in wide enough to to put a uh, a center lane with, you know, left turn, right turn in it. At this point, I don't think so. That's that's kind of where I think it is.
Is there, is there any, is there anything that's been proposed for the Fred Beans warehouse, that whole building there or anything else along?
I have, I have heard nothing about that. I mean, there's been uh. I'm I'm sure there are probably people with ideas in the back of their head of what they like, what they'd like to do with it. But I don't, I don't know of anything official that's been uh, that's been brought forward.
Okay, so nothing has been formally then submitted to the borough either, even as a sketch plan, is what you're saying?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
I I believe they may have, I I say nothing formally to the, when I say to the borough, I'm talking about to. Through a council or planning commission and so forth regards to this property. There may have been some discussions. I know Arcadia has worked with our our staff before for some of the other developments they're doing. Or proposing in the uh, in the borough, specifically on North Main Street. There's there's two properties that they're developing there, one next to the modern cleaners. And the other one uh at the corner of uh Maine and or uh North Maine and and Union, I think it is, right?
That's right.
Yeah, so there there's ongoing discussions there.
All right. What's uh, what's, what are you proposing here, Jason, in terms of quantities?
Greg, we can't hear you.
I I didn't know what was the order of units that you're proposing here in the, as part of this under the two options. How much square footage is commercial?
So the, on the commercial side, uh, in the second version, it's pretty straightforward because the building is, I think, right now about 8,500 square feet. The, we would remove a small section of the back of the building to provide for that driveline. And so I think it leaves approximately 7,000 feet of commercial space that would be in the borough. As for the residential program, um, we're so early that I I could only really answer in terms of ranges. But um, if if one were to take uh the kind of density that are uh project in North Main Street. Uh, or uh, looking at the kind of densities that has been discussed for the intel uh or other properties. I think we're, we're somewhere in the 150 to 180 unit range. Our project would would have uh, everything would be structured, all the parking would be structured and indoor. And uh, but the notion is that um, because this property is relatively narrow and has a lot of depth to it. That the architectural impact of the project is in some ways minimized. We were, you could see in those two renderings, we were trying to present a frontage to the project that would be more contextual and. And not overpower the street with, you know, five stories right up to the sidewalk. So uh, but this is um, you know, a preliminary concept. I mean, one of the things that we were hoping to do with this project in terms of the the unit mix is to actually have a broader mix. Than what some of the other projects have described to have smaller units. Available studio apartments as a percentage of our mix. That would be more affordable, but it also extend up to um, larger units. I, we've done a preliminary fiscal impact study and it probably won't surprise any of you that from a school district standpoint. It's a very substantial readable with a significant fiscal benefit. And that for the township in the borough, um, it's a positive fiscal benefit, although nowhere near the magnitude of uh, of the benefit for the school district.
Guess the, it it's also the the issue of the the traffic impact of that many units as well as the commercial.
What, what are the things uh, Jason, that I concerned about, I mean, not a concern. I I like that architecture can often hide the density. And you look at a building, it looks very attractive. And it's hard to, well, there's 100 units in there, there's 75 units in there. And I think uh, you know, I'm not trying to get carried away with density. One thing that I'd be concerned about is fire accessibility. With a rare building, trying to get around it, and I'm sure you're going to have some issues with that. And I don't, I don't know. Before you get too far along on that, how would you address that? Maybe wise to speak with a fire marshal and and figure out what that approach would be.
No, our, our fire marshal reviews all plans um when submitted, so does our code department. And that is something, it's a good point because that is something we look at. And I guess before we go too far down the line, because, you know, we don't really have a lot of opportunity for maybe the Borough Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission. To maybe work jointly on this particular project going forward. I mean, I know we're going to have issues with height of building, open space, woodland preservation, things like that. I mean, those are just the basics. It's zoned ally and not, I forget what you said it was in the borough. But I think our board would be looking at some sort of overlay and or a zoning uh amendment. For that, and we don't want to have spot zoning. So I think, you know, and you'd mentioned you in your conversations that the borough is looking at the kind of Broad Street corridor. Is that if someone from the borough could confirm that?
Yeah, is there an overlay district now for that?
There, there, there was conversation about an overlay district, uh, I believe, to accommodate the plans for the uh, for the intel property. I'm not sure it went beyond that, though. I I shouldn't say, I don't know how, what the extent of that was. I know it was discussed in the context of the uh, the intel property development.
This is James Lannan, I'm the vice chair of the Borough's Planning Commission. The overlay that President O'Brien just talked about was only for the intel site. The borough has not contemplated any other overlays for any other projects at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Judy is our planner. Do you have any comments?
Just some basic ones, just to put it into perspective. The intel sites approximately five acres with about 224 units. The portion of this site in Doylestown Township is approximately three acres. And Jason still in 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 rough numbers, we're not pinning him down because he hasn't pinned himself down yet, we're being fair. But um, mentioned like 150 to 180, if it was 150, that's 50 dwelling units per acre. Which is, it's dense, but it, we're talking about this corridor. I would just suggest that to piggyback on what Stephanie already said. If we were to look at something here, it should be cohesive in the corridor. So it might be something nice for the township and borough planning commissions to work together on an overlay that seemed to make sense in the corridor. But had similar densities on both sides of the street. Granted, this this parcel of the borough wouldn't have, it it's, it's different because there's a borough parcel, a township parcel. But I think we need to look at this area as a whole, the Carter's always been a hole. But we do need to be cognizant of what we're looking at and make sure that wherever, whatever we're doing. We're really looking at this with our eyes open and knowing that it's for this Carter right at tight. So it can't just be applied willingly elsewhere in the township. And it wouldn't, we would need to make sure that it couldn't be considered as spot zoning because it would be part of the Carter in general. So we have to be really wrapped up and we would need to make sure that there's benefit for the township in general. This parcel does read as part of the borough. I mean, I live down the street, Greg lives down the street. Ted lives a little farther down the street, Stephanie lives down the street. We all, I think, walk that Broad Street Carter.
Our neighborhood, definitely.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we we all walk that Carter a lot. And um, I think that if you polled 100 people that walked the Carter, nobody would know there's a sliver of township there. I mean, I know each township parcel there, so I I know what's going on. But even when people look at the map, I I think Jason even did, like, when you looked at the map, like, why is there a sliver of the township there? It goes in, the other piece of trivia is Font Hill and Tile Works are also with the township for those of you that are not sure if the land. I know borough officials, I see them nodding their heads too. But there's little oddities, so we need to look at it and we need to make sure that we're looking at it, not just in our little peripheral sense of this is one piece of the township. That's one piece of the borough. We need to see what makes sense for the, the Carter. But also, you know, our job is to keep the township's needs in mind also.
Right.
At the forefront.
And and I mean, I would agree that the, you know, the history and aspect of the corridor has changed that from that light industrial. And I, I mean, we always say this, we hate to lose our limited industrial, light industrial, you know, properties. But at the same time, you know, I I think you have to look at what's happening in the corridor and markets and things like that. And, you know, try to be a little proactive. And I think working with the borough would be awesome if the borough uh, planning commission would be willing to work with our planning commission. We, you know, I think we could really together sink our teeth into the the concept. And we're fortunate that we do have the Bucks County Planning Commission on for another discussion. And I mean, Evan's probably like, yeah, we could help out here.
Evan and I are doing a little chatting on the side here. We're, we're, we're trading facts and figures back and forth. We can't help ourselves. You got, you got a couple planners together. But there is something that Evan chatted with me about like just a second ago. And it's something that that I think bears discussion also. There's a lot of units right at the intersection of Atkinson and Broad. There are a lot of units on the books and a lot of units in the periphery of that. That we need to look at what's really happening on the Broad Street Carter traffic wise. What's happening at the intersections? And and it's not that, you know, years and years ago, when it was all industrial, it was an industrial route. And there were a lot of trucks and it was, those of us that were around remember what it was like when, you know, Mrs. Paul's was still going. And, you know, before car techs closed and stuff like that. But at that point, we didn't have Center Square or um, oh, um. Right, thank you. We had the old fairgrounds there. That's where we had the Fourth of July carnival. So that wasn't there when the rest of it was industrial. So we're looking at it incrementally. We need to see what's really going to happen with the traffic. Because Broad Street, you know, it's been improved and it looks nice. But that intersection, the intersection of Atkinson and Broad has always been a bad intersection. Actually, probably second, second to the intersection in of um, veterans and Atkinson.
Right, and the other.
Which is even worse.
Yeah, and I'm going to throw something else out there, which I know the borough's always kind of fighting on is the um, in heavy storms, the stormwater impact at. Veterans, I guess it is. And Broad, right, yeah.
By Landon Hill?
Yeah, by Landon Hill. I know that gets blocked off periodically.
And the Tilly residential piece right there, where the creek is.
Yeah.
Case, yeah, so, you know, I think that's um, you know, I think that's really in important. And um, you know, uh, so I think we, you know, I I just love the concept of the borough and the township working together on the corridor.
Stephanie, Stephanie, this, this is Gus Perey. I'm the chair of the Borough Planning Commission. And I would welcome um, being involved as a group with the township and looking at this property. And I think uh, our township, excuse me, our Borough Planning Commission would uh, would be uh, willing to cooperate and collaborate with you.
That would be great, perhaps.
You can set up a workshop.
Yeah, and we could kind of zoom workshop, maybe in January, we'd probably have to pick a different day. When do you guys typically meet?
The fourth Tuesday of every month.
Yes.
Tuesday, okay, that, that. Yeah, in the evening.
Yeah, seven o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, um, you know, I don't know, Judy, I mean, are depending on what's coming up. If we want to either find a separate date, depending on what your schedules are looking like for January or ours. You know, we obviously in the beginning of the year will need to stay on Zoom. And um, I think, you know, we could, John and I can work together. John Davis and I can work together in terms of advertising and hosting and, you know, everybody can kind of collaborate.
I think it would be great to set up a, I I don't know if we could do it during a regular meeting time just because of of the time factor.
Yeah.
They require a special meeting.
Yeah, you know, we could do a special meeting on a, in, you know, early morning, late afternoon or evening um on another day. Hate to drag everybody else out for something, but, you know.
Well, you're not dragging us out if it's all Zoom.
Yeah, that's true.
So we can all do this in our pajamas.
And Stephanie, I believe our next meeting, and James, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we're going to be seeing the uh, proposal for the old intel. The old intel property coming in front of us for the third time.
Yes, I I I I do believe that is an agenda item. No, uh, we should be seeing it next week at our regularly scheduled meeting.
Oh, good, okay. So I think we should try to set something up toward the end of January for uh, you know, a joint workshop meeting.
Is is the Borough uh, Planning Commission meetings online? Video?
We're zooming.
You're zooming?
Yeah, we're zooming.
So we could zoom into that to see what's going, see what the presentation is on on the Borough side for the intel building?
Absolutely. I don't know if it's the same setup as you have, where you have to ask um, for the, for the borough to send you access.
Okay.
There is something, I saw something. I'll ask John, you know, I can email with John and.
Or Karen Highland.
Let us know on that.
Yeah.
Karen to invite us to the.
Those meetings are usually announced on the Borough uh website. Uh, and also on their Facebook page. And the agenda usually has a link where you can pre-register to the meeting.
Yeah.
And you get an email back with the Zoom link to get into the meeting, so.
Yeah, everybody wants to make sure you don't get Zoom bombed, so you know who's coming in.
We had that happen on one of our first meetings. It was rather disturbing.
Yeah, I heard that and I learned from John's lesson that we don't want that to happen. So that's why we, we just request people to call, we'll give them the link immediately, but we just kind of want to know, like, we don't want that to happen.
Let's, let's try to set that up towards the end of the month.
Okay, I will work with John and and Karen on that.
Great.
Yeah, I I I, we completely welcome uh, that collaborative approach. And uh, certainly will, you know, before we develop a formal plan to submit uh, to either the township or the borough. Would welcome more of these kinds of planning conversations.
Certainly is uh, thought provoking.
It is.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. I know you have many other items tonight, so if there's any more questions, I'm happy to answer, but otherwise, uh, thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone. All right, good night.
Okay, now we have uh Evan Stone and Nishamity Manor.
I think we have Evan and Margie.
Yeah, okay.
And I think um, Diane, Marzecque is there too, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And Judy, just as a follow up, just so everybody's kind of on the, on the same page. And I, and I wish Tom were on the call, but this is um, a follow up. And, you know, to invite the county to to continue the dialogue. Evan was at our meeting in October where we hosted a number of commercial property owners. And uh, that have properties along the 611 corridor. And in addition to another property owner that has developed a property in New Britain Borough. And we talked about, you know, what's happening with um, larger commercial facilities on these corridors. And, you know, as the pandemic, as we come out of that, commercial changes that are occurring. You know, how do we, how do we address things? And we got a lot of good dialogue. We spent over an hour with uh, those property owners. And we, I believe, you know, the planning commission had a really good dialogue. And, you know, one of the focuses on the 611 corridor is obviously the county property. And, you know, one of the focuses, um, on the 611 corridor is obviously the county property. At 611 and Alms House, um, kind of on both sides, and, um. I think that, you know, moving forward, the, the planning commission wants to have a dialogue as to maybe perhaps what they heard, what you thought, what you heard. How, and what, you know, what are the next steps? Where do, where do we go? What, what impact does it have on that? On your particular property as well? Is Judy, did I kind of sum that up so everybody who wasn't at that meeting is kind of up to speed?
No, that's good, very good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, um. Did Evan, Ed, did you want to add to that Evan, where you were with the thoughts, because we were talking about, uh, commercial and mixed use development on that property? And I don't know what's quite happening with the, the county property.
Sure, um, you know, at this point, um, I think the presentation that you just saw is where the marketplace is headed. Um, and so, you know, what makes the most sense for that site? Uh, I think is kind of, uh, remains to be seen. But I think, you know, in our initial thought process, and Margie and Commissioner Marzegui, they can certainly, you know. Correct me if I'm wrong, was that we were envisioning more of a mixed use potential redevelopment there. Um, to take advantage of the 611 and Alms House corridors. Uh, given what we know about the marketplace. Um, you know, and I can tell you from an application standpoint and what we're seeing. Mixed use, multi-use, a multifamily development is the hot trend right now in the county. Um, you've got over 600 apartments proposed down at Oxford Valley Mall, you've got another 600 plus that they're contemplating in Mooresville. And we've seen other examples of that, um, throughout the county. Um, and as I put in the chat box, that notion of wrapping apartments around a parking deck is what we commonly call the Texas Donut. Um, and, and Warrington is even looking at them for infill development, perhaps at Valley Square. So I think that what we had touched on at the last meeting was that you're likely to see, and I, Doylestown Borough just saw one. For like the Bonton site, is that these underperforming commercial centers are going to start to look to reimagine themselves and incorporating residential into them. Is going to be a likely step. Um, the malls are certainly doing it, Oxford Valley, as I said, Granite Run Mall, in the other middle town township down in Delaware County. Um, has recently done the same thing, um, and it's a very good adaptive. Use of a lot of parking lot that may not be used in a way to, uh, help take care of vacant storefronts. Um, you know, the notion of mixed use buildings with commercial and retail on their first floor. Um, we've actually seen pushback, um, from certain developers and some developers, because the retail marketplace is kind of on, on. You know, shaky ground right now in some respects, and we already know that we have vacancies in the two centers on 611 and Alms House Road. Um, so that, you know, any development that takes place, it's going to have that kind of commercial or retail. Component is likely to be on a much smaller scale than what we might traditionally see. Um, but there remains a, a desperate need for what we call, uh, missing middle housing. Um, in the county, units that are smaller in size, more affordable. Um, and I, I don't like to use the word affordable, because it often carries a negative connotation, I, I use the word attainable. Um, because we have folks that are at eighty percent and even sixty percent of AMI, area median income, that can't afford housing. Um, we have young couples who are working, have decent jobs, but can't afford housing. We have older folks who would like to age in place and stay in the township where they raised their family and can't, because they can't move into different housing stock. Um, so while, you know, that's where the, you know, the apartments, or flats, if you like to call them that, starts to fill some of that niche. Um, to create that market. And so I think, you know, there's an opportunity perhaps at that corner to do something that's multi-generational. Um, can have an attainable component to it, but still also have a market rate component to it. Um, and may or may not want to have, um, some commercial and retail. Um, we heard about office, um, you know. I'm not seeing it, um, in terms of an, an office marketplace, um, particularly with the advent of COVID. So many companies now have gone to telework and are likely to stay that way. That the demand for office space is going to plummet in my estimation, that's just my opinion. There may be a lot of retrofit and rehab of existing office to create more solitary offices, the day of the open floor plan, I think, has gone. Um, and people are going to recognize now that they want to have individual offices, so there may be retrofit of existing office. Um, but I think we're likely to see a lot of vacancy in office. Um, it's a very, very low and continues to be an extremely low percentage of the overall number of applications that we see at the planning commission for review. Um, and I think, as I said last time, it's, it's well below five percent, often it's about a percent. Of the total applications that we'll see in a given year, at least in the three years that I've been here.
One of the things that came up in our, in our last meeting was, um, the need for family entertainment spaces. Um, what we don't have, I mean, there is movie theater over there, but there's, there's other, you know, family entertainment that may be a possibility. Um, rather than just strictly retail space, but, um. You know, along the lines of the bowling alleys, the, you know, the, the different kinds of things that, that offer. Um, entertainment sources, and we don't seem to have many of those, they've all pretty much gone by the wayside. And there may be new ways to imagine that kind of thing. Um, is that something that you would consider in the mix?
Absolutely, from my perspective, I, that's all part of a mixed use, um, component. Um, you know, one of the things that, you know, I would love to see is a truly mixed use. A development, oftentimes what we see is what we call mixed adjacent. Um, and it's, it's really just residential next to commercial, um, and, and that to me really kind of misses the boat. Um, and, and, you know, Lower Makefield is, is working on a project right now, I'm sure you may have heard about it, there's a, a large Wegmans. That's proposed with three hundred units, but at the end of the day, it's still Wegmans here and apartments over here. Um, they do, they are trying to incorporate some mixed use buildings, but they still never incorporated, at least in the iterations that we've seen, residential over retail. Um, it's still all single-story retail with multi-story, multifamily apartments on a different side of the site. So, yeah, I think, you know. That's part of embracing that mixed use, is that any type of those uses, you know, whether it's a, a tavern movie house, or it's a bowling alley. Um, definitely what I think retailers will tell you is that. The shopping experience now is about the experience, people are looking for that experiential. Um, you know, uh, you look at what they're doing in King of Prussia with the AstroTurf court in the middle and, and, you know, all the restaurants around and the fire pits. Um, and making places for people to gather. Now, we're in the midst of a pandemic, so people aren't necessarily talking about. You know, social gatherings and creating those spaces, but we'll get there again. Um, and so I think long-term, those, that's the kind of conversations that we need to have. And I think the important thing to, to keep in mind is to be flexible. Um, and that's one of the reasons why we struggle so much with zoning ordinances, because they're not flexible. And, you know, and, and so one of the things you want to do is to, to try to create a framework that allows for flexibility, sets reasonable parameters. Um, but then doesn't necessarily create a lot of hurdles that a potential developer is going to have to come in and ask you for eighteen variances. To make work, you know, to do what they want to do, or the, you know, then, you know, in some cases, you know, you're looking at having to create an overlay. Right, is another mechanism to, to achieve that. So I think that's really kind of the big takeaway here, is as you think about the future, is to try to be as flexible and adaptable as possible.
Absolutely. Evan, what about the possibility of like biotech? Is that, is that, I mean, does that fit with the mixed use? Can you, is that too much office? Um, I mean, it's very interesting, because when, you know, I first came to the township, the whole Wells Road corridor. Was what we called office laboratory with the ability to develop as R1 residential. And it developed as residential in the park and everything, but, you know, I, I think the thought at the time, you know. That the township had was that it would be. These office buildings, maybe a, maybe a Fort Washington kind of concept, which, you know, that's, but it didn't develop that way, you know. Um, so what, how do you incorporate that biotech possibly into the mix?
Um, you know, I think it's, it's a matter of allowing for that type of use to be, you know, part of a mix of uses that are permitted. Um, and, and it all depends on what size limitation you may want to place on the type of building or size of building that you put in there, but. Um, and I'm sure Margie can, um, have some thoughts on this as well, because we've heard that, you know, that incubator space, um, and biotech is, is a need.
It, it is a need, I think, um, they're, they're building a thirty-three thousand square foot, uh, addition to the Biotech Center in Buckingham. Um, but what you're, you may, uh, bump up against is there, there was, uh, some biotech space in. The, in the site behind, um, behind the, the nursing home. Um, and it's still vacant. So it, it's, the, the biotech space is, is not in demand, what's in demand is when those incubators.
The next spinoff.
And, and they need, need a space to manufacture what they created. So that's, that's the, the rub that you'll, that you're going to bump up against.
Um, I just wanted to throw something out there, and like, we, we touched on the whole experiential, not, not just think of like retail. But think in terms of non-residential experiential as the. Non-residential component to a mixed use, which is very important, but I just want to touch on the concept of residential. And talking about like attainable housing, or, you know, even affordable housing in such proximity to the correctional facility. I just want to throw that out there, is residential, is, is that really where residential belongs? With the correctional facility right there?
I had the same concern, Judy.
I'm, I'm bringing it up for discussion, I'm not saying it's wrong, I just want it out there, so it's better totally.
Yeah, and this is what this is about, it's about open dialogue, thought pro, you know, thinking out loud, sharing thoughts.
So, so you do have residential further, you know, at the end of, um, Alms House Road there, it's not that much further away than where it would be. At the Alms House.
No, it isn't.
Well, one of the things, um, can you kind of quantify a little bit Evan as to? Having a little bit hard time visualizing what space is available at Nishamity Manor, are you talking about removal of some buildings or things that? It would be adaptive reuse, I, I kind of see that area. Kind of the concept of you're going to be adding to it more like a college campus type of environment. With a variety of different buildings, maybe interconnected with walkways, parking at the perimeter. Conceptually that way, um. And that's just my kind of idea for a thought process, but I, I'm having a hard time wrapping my arms around. What areas of Nishamity Manor you're talking about?
Um, it's a good question, and I think that remains somewhat to be seen, but I think in rough numbers, we were looking at there's maybe about twenty-eight acres there. That could potentially be redeveloped, and, you know, I think naturally, um, you know, we would love to see the Alms House stay in some of the historic buildings perhaps. Uh, but beyond that, I think it's kind of an open slate, and, you know, you've got, you know, Grundy right next door. So, you know, back to the question about residential, we already have, you know, housing there to a certain extent, so that's where the notion of multi-generational kind of kicked in. Um, and, and the prison really doesn't concern me, um, as, as a major safety issue. Um, when I think about a community and a community fabric, um, you know. It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't raise a whole lot of flags for me, um, because again, I just think it's part of a community, part of a larger fabric. Um, particularly.
I have to say that, I'm the one who brought up the prison, but I grew up sort of in the shadow of the old prison, I mean, I grew up within. You know, very, very close proximity to the old, to the old prison in the borough, I, I grew up in, in, in the borough. And we used to, you know, walk over to the museum all the time and walk up to the tower and look down in the prison yard. When people were on the loose, shall we say, the helicopters were circling over my neighborhood. And we never felt threatened, it was just part of what the life was, but. But I had to bring it up, because when you talk about putting like a denser population or. An affordable population, it, it's the connotation where you can't put the most. Vulnerable of our people in the least desirable place to live, just from a social equity point of view, so I just had to throw it out for discussion.
Right.
Understood, and, and I was going to say, you'd probably get what you're likely to get, and, and I'm not casting aspersions here, but you're likely to get more. Um, I don't want to say complaint, but you're probably going to get more notice out of the gunshots.
Oh, yeah.
Club, that you can hear off in the distance versus the prison. But, but to your point Judy, and, and, and that's something that, you know, isn't lost on me, is that there is a social equity. Um, component to, to the world now. Um, and we can't continue to put, um, you know, the most vulnerable in our population in our least favorable places. Um, because that's just not good planning, and it's just not good, good for society long-term. Um, and we need to really rethink, you know, the way we, we approach some of that. Um, and, um, so, again, I, I, to the prison, it really doesn't strike me as being a problem. Um, and to the, and to the other question about, you know, the, the layout of the site, I think that's up to, up, you know, will be determined. Um, based on what happens, and whether it's integrated and pathways, I think there's all those, all those things are potential options. Um, everything would really be on the table, um, you know, kind of in a grand scenario. Um, you know, if we, if we wanted to, the, you know, the county could go out to RFP and solicit proposals from developers. You know, and ask the development community, what do you think is the highest and best use of, of the site? Um, and that could be done in such a way in which an RFP is developed. That incorporates kind of the ideas that we come up with together collaboratively to, to, you know, kind of pursue what that vision might be. Um, which could then help further ferret out the process.
Evan, I have a question for you, has anybody, um, thought of or considered, um, some kind of, um, a sports? Like a sports complex that you could have tournaments, you, you know, would bring people into, to our restaurants. I know we're, we're looking at all those things, Turk is right across from there, that could be a really. I know my kids played lacrosse, and I would go out to, uh, you know, towards the main line, and there would be these amazing complexes, they would run these tournaments. And the amount of people that came in, and I know there's a need between sock, I mean, teams are playing year-round, they're looking at tournaments. People go out, I don't know if you ever heard of Spooky Nook out in Lancaster, that's a great example, but. Um, and I know, like I said, there's something out towards King of Prussia, I didn't know if anyone, we don't have that, we don't have those fields, everybody's looking for the turf fields. It would serve an incredible, you know, men's league, you know, as I think, uh, I just recently read, our baby boomers are not. Going to senior centers, they're looking for lifestyle activities, right Judy?
Yes. So. Own that demographic.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I just wanted to throw that out there, that, that would be an incredible service that we provide to the community. Um, and it would also bring, um, a wealth of people into our area and business. So I didn't know if anyone had considered it. So.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that notion, you know, that concept had been tossed around, but we had also talked about traffic. Um, at one point, and I think with those types of facilities, you will see a very large increase potentially in traffic. And not that residential doesn't bring traffic as well, uh, all development brings traffic. Um, but I think with, with tournaments and with a large volume of people, I think. You know, traffic is something you'd have to think about very carefully with that concept, and again, doesn't mean that it couldn't potentially be done. But those are some of the things that we would have to think about and look at. Um, and again, is that really the highest and best use for that site?
Yeah, and with, with the ball fields already up the street on the Warrington side. You have, you have, uh, soccer fields, you have a football field there, you've got a dog park, I mean, there's, there's a. A significant amount of, of recreation fields already available. They're looking to expand that though, there's not enough. That's what, that's my point, and turf would put it to another level, because we don't have it in our area, there's nothing in our area that does, that to serve and. To serve, I just think you would, even just locally, it would, could be incredible.
Well, I do think that site is one of the few sites in, in the township that really can handle traffic too. Um, you know, that, that's the one thing it has going for it, that, that, you know, there is, uh, public transit there, there's. Pretty good traffic control already in place.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just have to say that regardless of whatever. Yeah, I I mean, I would just have to say that regardless of whatever happens on the county site, I think the township from a financial standpoint is going to be concerned about needs for police, you know, response to the site, let's say. So whether it's residential, whether it's, you know, office, whether it's commercial, whether it's a a sports complex, biotech, I think, you know, anything that's gonna, you know, require more policing would be a concern.
And potentially I hit on the school district and the infrastructure of those schools that are there. I know Barclay just put an addition on. And I don't think Titus is very big right down the street.
Cuts, they would be cuts, which is.
Because, yeah, it's a very small school.
Yeah.
So that's something to consider.
Yeah, I mean, there's like, you know, try to find the balance on all this, guys. It's a seesaw. It's one of these kind of fun, kind of challenged discussions that, you know, the planning commission doesn't get to have very often, you know, where there's instead of reacting to something specific to have this, you know, sharing of ideas and thoughts. I mean, right, Judy? I mean, we haven't.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, just haven't had to been able to do that. So it's exciting.
And the the interesting thing on this site, though, is that, you know, we see the county come in, the county is a partner with the township. We've done a lot of things together. We certainly enjoy leasing the Turk fields from the county for our recreation. And there's a lot of goodwill between the two. But it at some point, the the county and, you know, I heard the phrase used before, they're looking at highest and best use because it is taxpayer money. So if something's going to happen there, they want to make sure that's highest and best use. Planning Commission from Doylestown is looking at the wish list of what we'd like to say. And somewhere there's going to be a marriage of the ideas that I think that just by vetting everything out and getting it on the table and talk about what's trending, nothing will be worse than than the county, you know, selling, leasing, joint venturing with someone and then having empty whatever. We we need something that's going to be viable, that's going to make sense and that's going to withstand the current trend. You know, and I I don't see residential as a trend. I see the residential and the infill as a wave. It's the next next thing that's happening. But we don't want to just build a trendy use. We want to make sure that something there can withstand the test of time and be a a vital part of the community, whatever's going to happen there.
Well, I think that gets back to the flexibility in in the zoning and the use, you know, if we have enough flexibility that things can be adapted as needs change, it's not a Herculean effort to do so. You know, I think that's something that we really do have to consider for a site like this. Because there's so many different ways it could go.
Can I ask a little backup question? Doesn't the county have a long range plan as to what its night needs might be for additional offices? I mean, in the borough, obviously, there's a new courthouse there and the administration is building is being rehabbed and and such, but what are the needs of the county going to be relative to that location in the next, you know, twenty five years, thirty years?
I can I can say one word, telework.
Telework?
And I think that we're all, we're all examples of that at the moment.
That's true, but you'd have a courts there, you have the new Nishamney Manor home, you have some administrative offices, you have the elderly senior housing complex there. I didn't know whether there's any plans for expanding any of those in the future, what the thoughts of the county are on that.
Now, I think I think what we're going to be doing is instituting a, we're crafting a telework policy now. And Commissioner Marselia can can speak to this. And also taking a look at the building that we just remodeled right before COVID. Right now, I the the use of that build, it's underutilized because folks can telework from home. And we're looking at at modifying some of the office space now so that it's landing space, not necessarily office space for for folks. So I I don't know that the need will grow for for this foreseeable future. One of the the concepts that we were talking with discussing about this site was the health department itself is a very old building. If anything, that building would go away and and something else would be put not necessarily in its place, but but either on that side of the street or the the other side of the street. But that's that's all part of this process, this vetting process and in 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 what maybe that might look like in the future.
How about the hospital? Are they looking to add another area that they want to maybe concentrate on?
Doylestown Hospital?
Yeah, Doylestown Hospital.
They have the building down in in Warrington that I think they they've.
I saw that.
Yeah.
I know. I was there. Like, you know, it just makes sense. It's so close.
Yeah, but micro micro hospitals is a trend.
Yeah, and as our boutique hospitals, they're joining right now.
In New Britain, you know, the the division of chop, I mean, those are great.
Right, you're right. That would be incredible.
But even the small private boutique hospitals where you're, you know, it's not part of the insurance stuff, it's just a private, almost like you go in and you're in a hotel for a day or two. And you recover from your surgery and you know, meals are brought in, they're catered, and then you go home.
Doylestown might get mad at us if we tried to attract some competition.
Yeah, I I'm not sure how well that would go over with Doylestown Hospital, but.
It's it's your larger healthcare systems and networks that are using the the micro hospital concept to expand their footprint into areas where they might not normally be. I don't know that I would necessarily say St. Luke's is doing it, but I guess you could say St. Luke's is kind of doing that with their new campus down in Quakertown.
Beautiful.
You know, expanding their footprint, you know, from where they're typically located in Bethlehem, but.
Right, they're typically going into areas that they perceive to be underserved. And I think it'd be hard to say that Central Bucks would be perceived as underserved in healthcare.
Yeah. I think so. But this has been great to hear all these ideas, and I think we need to keep this up. You know, it's it's I'm what I'm hearing is flexibility is key for our planning and zoning to consider these things so that we can keep these options open with a, you know, try to limit the the hurdles. But I don't know if anybody has anything else they want to add to that?
I'm just a curiosity. I know we we talked several months ago, but what is sort of the timeframe that the county is looking at to make decisions about going forward? Is there a timeframe?
So I'll jump in and tell you, it was two years ago. You know, this was something that Commissioner Lockery and I had talked about back then, but just due to schedules and busyness, we just never got it done. So, I mean, we're we were kind of, I'm hoping that you even will come. I don't know when we're going to meet again, but if you have ideas that you specifically want to be included there. I think that we're flexible. We're trying to make sure that we give you what you need and what you want.
Okay.
So could I add? Could I add something? So Evan spoke briefly about potentially RFPing the site. I I mean, we would, we would really like to do that. We think that that would be a really good way to attract attention to the site and and potential development that that could include the the kind of things that you want to see and and the best possible uses for the site that we need to capture. One thing that I think is is very, very good news, we we just sold the, and I don't know if you all know this, I think you might, Stephanie. We just sold the pre-treatment plant. The water and sewer sewer treat sewer treat pre-treatment plant across the street to the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. So I think that that helps set this site up for future development in a way that that could have become a little bit problematic if if the county still held it. So I I think that and and that had nothing to do with this site. It just so happened that they recognized the need to keep it up a little better than we could.
I didn't know you sold it, Margie, but I do know that there have been issues with that pre-treatment plant and the Bucks. Yeah, for a long time and that.
Right, right.
We end up with it down at, or the county ends up with it down at the the sewer treatment plant itself. And I know DEP is, that's something they've been harping on.
Right, right, absolutely. And and we were, I think we're battling a a fine with that right now. So we we're getting out of that business and fortunately handing over to people that know much more about it than we do and can afford it. So i- if we could get your blessing to to draft something and send it to you and and get your feedback on it, that would be a real step forward for us.
I really like the idea of the RFP and making sure that it is written in a way that encourages responses from diverse developers. Because I think we do need to evaluate everything from a sports complex to residential to this true mixed use, commercial, residential, hybrid. So I I think that would push our thinking to see who responds, but I would want to make sure we're drafting it in a way that makes it really appealing to folks to respond.
That's great. Well, we certainly.
It's a good way to take the temperature.
Yeah, absolutely.
So maybe we can have, you know, Evan take a lead on that in developing and then send it over to you before we do anything. I don't know if we call it an RFP or an RFQ or what what or both.
We're going to call it an RFI, Request for Innovation.
There you go.
There you go. That's good. Bring those barrels with you.
I I like the concept of a good old fashioned design challenge, like a design competition to see what's worthy of the site or what the site is worthy of, either way, or who is worthy of developing it.
What do I do the work for us to figure out what would be good and then you can just pick and choose?
Yeah, and there's, you know, in in along those same lines, there's another potential avenue there, which is to reach into our local universities who have planning departments and open it up as a, you know, as a semester project, if you will, and get the young the young minds, the young planners that are coming up to think about what might might happen there.
Ted, Ted, does Devon have a design studio or project there that I know they've done some stuff with like stormwater and you're unmute, Ted. Sorry.
Press the space bar. Hold the space bar down.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you down.
You have to hold the space bar while you talk.
Yeah.
Most of their planning has been in the agricultural or water areas and things like that, but I'm I think it would be a great idea to propose. Actually, I think they do have a a newer graduate program in terms of community leadership and things like that, so that might be an avenue as well.
Thanks, Ted.
Do you have a contact over there, Ted?
I know more of the administrators, so I'd have to get back to you on who.
Okay, it'd just be good to to, you know, like, find out who to contact with something like that.
Right.
I'll find out and I'll I'll email everybody.
I know there are other schools too, Evan, that have those planning departments, Penn and stuff like that, but.
Oh, yeah, Penn Drexel and State, you know. They all they all do that, their architecture and planning departments.
Yeah, Temple has the planning also now. They offer a master's in planning and so there there are a few nearby.
Do we have the luxury of time to do something like that? It would, I just seems like a a great way to push our thinking, but is that is it really an option that we could have that amount of time to engage both the commercial responders and student responders?
I think the problem with the student responders is is it's going to take, you know, at least a year to get on the curriculum and then, you know, to to get it all organized and find the professors to run it. So that's a little more long term, but it's certainly, you know, I think you would get faster action from the private sector.
Unless it's an independent study, that can always beat it up.
And at a graduate level, if there's people that are interested in doing that. But we'd have to to find out, you know, where we could get that from.
Where where we could make it part of the RFP process.
That they have to engage.
Partner with.
They have to partner with. I like that idea, Margie.
That's a great idea.
Over partner with a with a school and a student and stuff.
And and the irony is that the developer that we just saw, Jason Duckworth, he would be the type of developer that's most likely to do that. He has the contacts between he and his wife with with the University of Pennsylvania. They're right down there in Center City. Someone like that is the type of developer you're going to get that would do that partner. The typical person coming in and just doing the same thing all the time is not the developer you're going to get that would A, respond to a design challenge type RFP or B, have the aptitude and desire to really do it. So I think that going with the RFI, the Request for Innovation, as Evan stated, I think that it really could be a win-win-win.
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea.
With also the chance for potentially a public-private partnership with the county, you never know.
Nancy, Jen, your thoughts? I mean, obviously, you're want to in the draft forms, whatever's provided, share with the rest of the board. Let them know we're we're kind of going out in the ocean here, new new territory, going exploring.
Sounds like a really exciting opportunity and I've I I'm looking forward to seeing what we come come up with. I do like the idea of residential in that area for a bunch of different reasons, but who who knows what what this process is going to lead us to?
Nancy, what do you?
I'm thinking the public-private partnership could really be an opportunity to highlight that innovation piece because I really think that is a trend that we could be leaders in, and I I I'm really interested in that in particularly. So I'm curious what comes out of it.
Exciting.
Yeah. And we can ask our board members as well if there's something they're hearing among their committees and we can, you know, talk with them. Like I mentioned, the sports fields, because I'm focused on the parking rec a little bit right now, but and I know there's a need, there's a huge need. But, you know, I think that we talked about whoever asked was Evan, that what was in the past, what your needs are. I think that's important to look at too before. And I know, right, we have to get our the top money, the county has to, because it's taxpayer property, they have to put it out bid for the best, the highest, and I don't know where the if the residential would work then, actually. I think it might. I mean, I think that we're looking to try to make sure that people of all incomes, especially that middle income that we're that's having trouble finding housing, has a place to go.
And that's one of the challenges that Doylestown Township has is that even when we do build smaller properties on smaller lots, the property value tends to just creep up and up until they're no longer at that kind of middle affordable kind of level. So having a property at that location seems like a a good location where it would keep the values at a lower level, a modest level. So I.
And the guns, right? I think that's a huge issue, putting with it between the shooting range and the correctional facility. I'm not sure.
We we have, we have a good amount of residential by the by the shooting range anyway, so it's not like this is a, that would be a new, a new thing in the township. But.
Building it intentionally is, I think, might be different. That's just my take on. I'd be curious what other people think.
I like the idea that Craig had with the college campus appearance of, you know, a mixed use development with more of a. more of a campus feel to it, because it would go so nicely with the almshouse building. You know, I think, and there could be quite a bit of buffer there between, you know, the the prison and, you know, shooting ranges or whatever to make that work, but.
Yeah, there is, there is a natural buffer now.
Yeah.
Which is, which is nice.
There's also so much public transportation, I mean, in, for, for Doylestown. It's, it's a good amount of transportation there with the 55 running by, so, and, and, you know, the, the Dart, I think, goes that direction too. So that, maybe we would add more routes to it or, or something to that nature, but I think.
Ridership would be nice.
I'm sorry, what, Margie?
Ridership would be nice. Really struggling for ridership, so would be nice.
I keep thinking about space for nonprofits and community services for people, especially where transportation is already there and is accessible. And that seems to be a pretty good spot for things like that.
Okay, so I guess we're ready to pick this up in January. Is anybody else to have any, any other issues or anything to add to this?
Good.
Okay, well, um, just moving forward, I just had a few, few notes that I wanted to end up with. If, is there anybody else from the public that had any questions? I don't know if we have anybody else on. I just wanted to give everybody a chance to.
Do we have Peter and Kayla?
Yeah, Peter and Kayla are on. But that's it.
I didn't know if anybody wanted to add anything before we, we kind of wrap it up for tonight. Okay, um, I just put some notes together and, and I was saying, as we've been discussing our updates for planning and zoning, gathering information on trends and housing, commercial development and land use, we've seen some shifts in the needs and desires of the community. The COVID pandemic has made the need for home, small offices shift and a shift from to outdoor dining and takeout, the need for safe outdoor community spaces and pedestrian corridors throughout. Many of the needs of this year will become our new normal in suburban communities such as ours. I'd like to see us continue this dialogue with the developers and with the county. We're learning a lot from them as to what is working and what may need to be amended. In addition, I've recently made, been made aware of the concerns of our Environmental Advisory Council to create woodlands where possible in open space rather than open fields or lawns, as well as larger setbacks from streams and wetlands and overall reduction in our carbon footprint. In our advisory role, it's critical to educate ourselves as the public and the public as to each project brought before us. The input from our citizens is essential. It is wonderful to have the public participate in our meetings, however difficult that it's been this year. The concerns of the neighbors over any proposed development is critical to making informed decisions in planning and design. So I'd just like to thank each one of you for your contributions to this ongoing effort, and I wish you and your family the best of this holiday season, such as it is. Sorry that we cannot meet in person and enjoy cookies and celebration this year, but we will do so again in the future. So I thank you all, and I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday.
Well said, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in the new year.
Make sure cookies be well.
No, I couldn't get them from the, you know, the sheltered workshop. They weren't making cookies this year. They, nobody can do anything.
They make cookies too. So happy holidays, everyone. Be safe.
Thank you. Tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Evan and Margie. Thank you for attending.
Thank you, Margie. See you. Bye-bye. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.